Good evening, everyone. We are now going to have the subcommittee meeting on conference. And this meeting will be to discuss the following matter. Discuss proposed eminent domain on Upper Broadway for the, from the stabilization fund for Upper Broadway right-of-way and easement acquisition for the legal project account of five-five-four-zero-two-one-two-zero-dash-five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero for the purpose of easement acquisition. Also, we have an appropriation for free cash on the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement plan for the Beecham Street Casino to be transferred over to the Upper Broadway right-of-way easement acquisition in the amount of $100,000. In addition to that, we have a sum in order for the sum of $50,000 to be used from free cash under FY 2020 Capital Improvement Plan from the Walnut, uh, community block grant, Sixth Walnut Road Improvement total, to be transferred also to the Upper Broadway right-of-way easement acquisition legal project. Officials invited to attend are members of the City Council, City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Housing and Community Development Director Alex Train, City Solicitor Cheryl Watson-Fisher, and all residents. At the time, the clerk called the role of the members of the council.
Councilor Cucuro.
Yeah.
Councilor Tenevi Garcia. Councilor Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Here.
Councilor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Councilor Abadana.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Councilor Vido.
Councilor De Hazel.
Here.
And Councilor Judah Garcia. You have seven members present to have a call.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to allow the City Manager to make a opening remark and then turn over to his team.
So, I'm gonna be very brief, because Alex is gonna give you a presentation, but I just wanna frame the discussion and sorta try to eliminate the angst right at the very beginning. So, what we're doing here is nothing out of the ordinary or unique to Chelsea. Every time you build a new roadway with federal money, and we're getting a lot of federal money to do this, you have to do a survey of the entire layout of the roadway and the sidewalk to make sure that you actually own the land where the road and sidewalk exist. In doing that survey, you then typically identify two kinds of problems that you have to remedy with permanent easement and a temporary easement. So, let me talk about the permanent easement. The first problem you usually find out is that the roadway that was laid out 150 years ago, there are always these small little pieces of the road or the sidewalk that the city realizes, "We don't own that." That little piece of sidewalk that we've been walking on for 150 years, we, that's owned by someone else. It's usually the abutter who has no idea, it's probably the predecessor, three owners before, that had that piece of land, it became the sidewalk, people walked on it for 150 years, the new owner has no idea that they only actually own that little piece of sidewalk. Usually, it's a sliver of a foot or two. However, we're getting federal money, they wanna make sure the city owns every piece of the roadway, so that requires us, in those unique circumstances, we have to acquire that little sliver by a permanent easement. And on this corridor, there are nine such instances of that, where there's a little sliver of the existing road or the existing sidewalk, it's on the existing road, no one would ever know it wasn't owned by the city, but it isn't, so we have to take that by a permanent easement, and we have to pay the person for it. That's the permanent easements. There are nine of them, they're identified on those charts in red, they're very tiny slivers for the most part. The other problem is, as we do this survey, we realize, you know what? To get this work done, we're gonna have to stand on someone's driveway for a while, usually because we're gonna have to taper in the work so that the water's flowing down the driveway onto our sidewalk properly and into the street. So, we're gonna have to stand on that person's property for a while. Well, you just can't do that without telling the person and getting the right to do that. I can't come on your property and stand on a foot of it for two or three days without getting your permission. And we do that by way of what's called a temporary easement. We pay you for the purpose of having the workers stand on your edge of driveway for a little bit. And for the most part, all of these 180 temporary easements that you see in green are right at the edge of the property line, where temporarily, we're gonna either be, or the contractor's gonna be maybe storing some equipment for a day or two, or doing a little work at the edge so that the transition between the private property and the curb or the sidewalk is smooth, because basically, we don't want any, we want water to flow properly from your property onto the sidewalk into the street. And so, all these areas in green, these temporary easements, are situations where temporarily, someone's gonna be on your edge of property. But to do that, we have to pay for it, or you have to gift it to us. And so, in those circumstances where the owner hasn't given us the right for free, we have to pay for it. And so, paying for the nine permanent easements and paying for the 180-odd temporary easements, the total cost of all of that, because we had to appraise all these rights, is $300,000. And so, tonight, we're looking to explain this to you and to ask you to appropriate the money, because in order to move forward with the project, one thing the federal government says is, "You can't bid the project, you can't go forward until you've appropriated all the money to make sure all the abutting owners are paid for this inconvenience." And that's what I'm asking you to do tonight. It's paying for these permanent and temporary easements. A lot of these neighbors have been really good neighbors and said, "We don't want any money, you can stand on my driveway for a day." But if they don't agree to that, we do have to pay them. And that's the purpose of the cost of the temporary easement. You can see for the most part, these are relatively modest payments to most people.
With that said, I'm turning it over.
Good evening, councilors. So, we'll talk through just a basic overview of the project and then dovetail into a discussion about the temporary and permanent easements. So, the Upper Broadway project encompasses the segment of Broadway between City Hall Ave and the Revere City Line. Currently, the scope of work of the project calls for comprehensive reconstruction of the roadway, sidewalks, intersections, and streetscape elements, as well as the replacement of substandard drainage infrastructure to reduce instances of flooding. Over the last three to four years, we've been aggressively pursuing federal financing for the project, as the City Manager mentioned. We've secured $11.3 million in federal grant financing to execute the project as part of the Federal Transportation Improvement Program. Currently, the main components of the project include the surface elements at the key intersections of Broadway and Cary, Broadway and Webster, Broadway and Stockton, and Broadway and Eastern, as well as reconstruction of the road and sidewalks in between those intersections. The ultimate goal at the intersections is to install intelligent traffic signal systems that optimize traffic flow and ameliorate some of the chronic safety issues that we have on the corridor. As we're nearing the end of the design phase, the City Manager described the right-of-way process that we're mandated to undertake per our federal grant requirements. So, that right-of-way process is a complex process that starts with mapping out the ownership of all of the properties. So, we've done that as we've been moving the design forward in order to identify which private properties are affected by the project and how large of a section of property the city might require to complete it. Over the coming months, our plan is to release the project for bidding. So, once the right-of-way phase is concluded, we'll issue an invitation for bids, which is slated to be released in March, procure a construction contractor in coordination with the State Department of Transportation, and then proceed with construction, which is tentatively scheduled to begin in July or August of this summer. Overall, it's about a two-year construction timeframe, so we're going to gear up in August 2022 and substantially complete the project by the fall of 2024. The subsequent spring, there'll be some punch list items, like replacing street trees that were planted that may have died throughout the winter, and making some final touches to the finished product before the contractor fully demobilizes and hands it over to the city. So, throughout the construction phase, we'll have engineering and landscape architecture consultants and our project management team overseeing every aspect of the work in coordination with the state. So, while we recognize this is a massive project area, we do acknowledge that the project will have some very real benefits for the community. The corridor today is encompassed by a number of high crash locations, and first and foremost, this project is really about safety and how to improve safety at some of these dangerous intersections. Additionally, we're seeking to enhance transit reliability and access by improving bus stops and implementing transit priority systems at the intersections. These systems allow buses to have the right-of-way to reduce the amount of time buses spend waiting in traffic. Furthermore, as you've seen out on the Broadway corridor, a lot of the sidewalks are in disrepair, the roads have potholes, and it's not a level surface appropriate for residents with disabilities. So, everything that we're implementing as part of this project will be fully accessible to residents with disabilities, as well as seniors who live up and down on Broadway. And then, at the aesthetic level, the project will also yield some tangible beautification benefits. New street trees, updated bus shelters, new sidewalks, new pavement markings, and a more welcoming corridor will benefit all folks that live on Broadway, conduct business on Broadway, and rely on it on a daily basis in order to get to and from their workplaces and their homes. Additionally, we're going to be implementing a large drainage phase as part of the project, which will see water quality improvements. Today, the drainage system on Broadway is a combined system with sewer and drain all functioning in one system. This results in overflows into Mill Creek, which degrade water quality and harm the habitat of that salt marsh. So, once all is said and done, we'll have separate sewer and separate drain facilities, which will address a lot of the water quality issues we're seeing in Mill Creek. And then, we'll also seek to mitigate heat and air quality issues by planting new street trees, shrubs, and other landscaping on the corridor. So, as the City Manager indicated, the federal right-of-way process is a rigorous phase that we're required to undertake. And in the instance of this project, it involves permanent easements and temporary easements. So, the permanent easements are nine areas along the project corridor where 100, 150 years ago, when they built this road, they actually built the sidewalks partially on private property. For instance, right outside here, across from City Hall in front of the Verizon Building, there's a corner that's in between the two bus stops where users can access the sidewalk, which is technically on private property. So, it's at these nine areas that we have to formalize the property ownership, meaning we have to execute permanent easements in order to provide the public with rights to use the sidewalk indefinitely as one of the requirements of our funding. There's no instances of the city acquiring buildings or permanently acquiring property that's being used for other purposes right now. So, we're not going to be taking people's driveways, nor are we gonna be taking people's structures as part of this project. In terms of the temporary easements, these are really needed in order for the contractor to build the road and sidewalks. So, throughout the course of the corridor, most of the buildings are built right up to the edge of the sidewalk, or they're set back by 10 to 15 feet. So, whenever the contractor is pouring sidewalk panels, replacing the roadway, or doing any type of work on the project, they may need to access the property in order to complete the work. Additionally, where the private property intersects with the public property, we wanna make sure that we're sensitive to some of the impacts that could occur if we don't act proactively when we're building the road. So, for instance, when we see new sidewalks installed, we wanna make sure that water isn't accidentally ponding or pooling on private property. So, by allowing this temporary access onto private property, we can make sure that transition is appropriately built so private properties abutting in the corridor aren't unduly impacted. So, this process begun with a series of title exams and the formation of the right-of-way plans that you have before you tonight. So, as part of this process, we engaged with owners early throughout the course of the design phase. The first formal notice that we sent is called an intent letter, when we last fall formally notified residents that own the temporary and permanent easement areas that the city is interested in acquiring rights to those areas in order to facilitate the project. That was accompanied by a federal highway guidebook, which outlines residents' rights and responsibilities during the project. Many residents requested site visits as part of this process, so we were able to show them the areas that are impacted, as well as the areas where we may need temporary or permanent access. And during these site visits, as well as through this initial intent letter, residents were informed of their right to request compensation as part of the process. Subsequently, we undertook appraisals of all of the temporary and permanent areas delineated in green and red in the attached maps. These appraisals determined for the permanent easements, the cost for acquiring that permanent right for the public to use the property as a sidewalk, and for the temporary easements, the cost that the city would have to pay essentially to rent that area for two years so the contractor could complete the work. Residents were notified about their right to compensation, and we also solicited donations as a second option in order to ensure that we were stewarding the project budget and taxpayer resources properly. In total, I would say about 70% of the owners of temporary easements agreed to provide us with the right of entry, meaning they donated those temporary rights. And some of the permanent owners of the permanent easement areas did so as well. But in essence, there are still owners that either were not responsive, do not exist, and I'll get to that part in a moment, or requested compensation. And as such, we're proceeding with the final phase of this process tonight. So, there are a couple of properties on Broadway where the ownership right now is unknown. So, a good example of this is up by Mill Creek on property that used to be owned by the Slade's Mill Company. So, in that area, as well as areas where property owners are requesting compensation, we've proposed compensation that's aligned with the appraised value of the spaces. So, we took the appraisal reports, we added up all of the costs associated with temporarily renting those properties, as well as permanently acquiring the rights of those properties, and it totaled roughly $300,000. So, then we fast forward to this past fall, where we began sending out the final notice before we moved into tonight's meeting. So, this notice was called the 30-day written offer letter. And it's in this letter that the city formally offers that amount of compensation to the property owners that either requested compensation or did not respond to the initial outreach attempts. This written offer letter specified the amount that we would pay to permanently acquire the easement areas where we'll have permanent rights, as well as the cost to essentially rent the temporary easement areas for the two-year duration of the project. Subsequently, we've moved through the remaining right-of-way and design matters, leading us to tonight's meeting relative to the order of taking and the requested finance orders that are before you. Usually, once the order of taking and the finance orders are completed, we'll record these votes at the Registry of Deeds, and then we have to submit all of these materials to the Mass Department of Transportation in order to start the project. We're not permitted to release the project for bidding until this process has been fully completed, and we're not able to break ground until we have all of these rights secured. And so, this is a table of the nine permanent easements. As you can see, they range from the easements associated with the Verizon Building right outside, as well as some of the easements on Broadway and near Mill Creek. So, these nine areas are primarily related to the layout of the sidewalk. So, they're delineated in red in the maps that are before you. Most of these are sidewalk corners, where the corner of the private property encroaches into the public right-of-way. And through this process, all we're doing is we're formalizing that public sidewalk. There won't be any instances where buildings will be impacted through this, nor buildings taken through the acquisition of these permanent easements. And then, these maps depict both the permanent and the temporary easements. So, importantly, the temporary easements are in green in these areas. And essentially, they envelop all of the setback areas along Broadway, as well as driveways of the abutters. And as I mentioned, this is to ensure that the project properly grades the sidewalk and the abutting asphalt or concrete driveway areas to prevent any type of ponding of water, as well as to allow the contractor's workers to enter onto the property physically in order to replace the sidewalks, install signage, or complete other components of the work. And they primarily span all the way up Broadway. The northern, or northwestern side of the street has more setbacks than the southeastern side, so you'll see a lot more pieces of property highlighted in green in these areas. And then, at the corner, Crescent Ave is kind of the second permanent easement, where there's a sidewalk presently that encroaches on, on private property. And then, as you move northward, traversing up Broadway, the setbacks become a little bit different, where primarily, these areas were seeking temporary access to mostly driveways, walkways, and alleyways. And then, similarly, once we reach the corner of Eleanor Street, we have our next permanent easement, which is the corner of a parcel where we have to install a concrete panel to make sure there's an ADA compliance sidewalk surface. Where Broadway bends, up by Broadway Glen, there are two larger temporary areas that are associated with driveways and setbacks. And these areas have kind of funky grading, where we are worried that water can pond unless we go in and create that transition between the driveway and setback areas and the sidewalk. And then, closer to Mill Creek, the Holiday Inn and Walgreens, we're proposing a larger temporary easement at the entrance to Beth Israel, as well as around the perimeter of some of the abutting parcels like the gas station. And then, the last permanent easement is northward up by Mill Creek, and I'm just gonna toggle over to it right now. And it's on the, the corner of the new 1005 Broadway Affordable Housing Development. Everything else in this northern section is more temporary easements required in order to build the sidewalks, create the necessary conditions to prevent water from ponding, and the access necessary for the workers to complete the project. So, I have a couple of slides on the design, if folks have any questions on the design aspects, but I'll stop there to see if there are any questions on the right-of-way process, particularly the temporary and permanent easements.
Councilors, any questions so far? Councilor Cucuro. Speak into the microphone, Mr. Cucuro, thank you.
I have a simple question. So, when you take this land from these people, right? It's not gonna be a big piece, from what I see here, it's small little pieces. The rest is just gonna be temporary, you're not gonna take it, you just, are you gonna pay these people?
That's a good question. So, for the areas in green, those areas are all temporary, they're these little slices of property. So, we've informed those owners that they have the right to compensation, we've also asked them to donate those temporary access rights through signing a right of entry. So, a right of entry is something we use on all local projects, where we ask the owner to allow us onto the property in order to replace the sidewalk panel or to install the fire hydrant. So, around 70% of the owners agreed to sign rights of entry forms, meaning that they opted to donate that temporary space, and then the remaining 30% opted to be compensated, or they did not respond, so we are legally obligated to compensate them.
Are they all gonna get the same amount of money, or each one is compensated? The ones in green, you, you're not taking, you're just borrowing it.
That's a great way to conceptually think about it.
So, are all those people gonna get the same amount of money? And the ones in red, you're gonna compensate different according to the amount that you take?
Exactly. So, the ones in red are permanent, so that compensation is higher, the ones in green are all not receiving the same amount, but the amount of compensation is based on the size of the area and the amount of time we need the area for.
So, what will be the, did you already estimate the average amount that you will pay these people? Let's say the ones in green, they have a small section. Over here, from what I see, the project lasts until 2025. So, are you gonna pay them? So, they're gonna be on their land for that amount of time. So, did you already figure out how much you're gonna give these people for the amount of time that you're gonna take it from them?
We did. So, although the project's running through the end of, or the beginning of 2025, they're not gonna need that space the entire time. You know, they'll need that space when they're constructing the sidewalks in front of that particular building, and then they move on. So, we at our appraiser complete appraisals of all of these areas to determine the amount of compensation for that period of time. And it ranges, on some of the typical areas, it's anywhere from 300 bucks to 1,000 bucks. On the larger areas, it ranges from 1,500 to 3,000 dollars. It really depends on the size, though.
So, what is the, on your estimation, right? Let's say you take a big chunk for a person, and you hold it for three-year period, right? What will be the maximum amount of money you would give these people?
Again, it, I can't say without knowing the size of that property.
Well, wouldn't you already know by the size of these things here?
We do, and I can share that list with council if you want of the appraised value of all these spaces. Like I said, it ranges for the small areas, it's 300 to 1,000, for the larger areas, it's upwards of 2,000 for that, that period of time.
So, the maximum any of them could get would be about 3,000 bucks, is that what you're saying?
Roughly.
And the lowest is what? 1300 bucks?
300, yeah.
But it wouldn't be for the, so here, you estimated until 2025, right? But it wouldn't be that long, some of them might be just a few months.
Or, or a couple of days, even.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you, thank you both for the overview presentation. Yeah, I'm glad to see that we did reach out to the abutters of the property, and some of the properties in instance, because I've looked at the project, it's just a lot of sidewalk, it's a lot of just close-in areas. And by going over to just, you know, prior to the project starting, to just showing up and being on someone's property for three weeks, or two days, or four days, or whatever the time is, we've actually tried to do the right thing and go out and let folks have the opportunity to know and also their rights. I wanna thank and commend the city for that. And it's, it's great just because we do wanna really start enhancing that part of the community down there. A lot of folks, you know, when I was a City Councilor large, they were always talking about beyond City Hall, what we were doing, here's a great investment that we're making down there. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, and I spoke to the City Manager, and about resisting, you know, some folks not sure how long, as Council stated, that they will be on the property and how, you know, it would impact them, and we just have to be very clear what's going on. So, I just wanna again say thank you for the presentation, and I'm glad that some residents are here to also get a full view, and hopefully, they'll get a chance to ask some questions also.
Absolutely.
Just a statement, thank you.
And I do just wanna add that if, once we have a contractor on board, before we break ground on any construction, we'll have a public meeting, so we'll be able to go over with all residents the schedule and the exact amount of time the contractor would need to access your property, as well as be able to coordinate matters like accessing the driveway, accessing the walkway. Because we recognize this massive project will be disruptive to residents, whether it's driving through a construction zone or having to live outside of a, a construction site, but we do wanna do our best to minimize the disruptions to your day-to-day lives.
Councilor Lopez?
I have a question, is, uh, do you guys reach out to every homeowner? And, and how many homeowners got back to you guys? And what happened if some of them didn't get back to you? And what happened if some of them didn't get back to you? What's gonna happen? We're gonna take that anyway?
So we reached out to all of the property owners with the, the easement. So it was a little bit over a hundred, a hundred and twenty property owners. So we did multiple outreach attempts. So we started with kind of informal door-to-door outreach. We released that intent letter that outlined the project, as well as the city's intent to acquire temporary or permanent rights. We also released a second set of mailings for the appraisal to let them know, you have the right to be compensated. There'll be appraisers near your property, just to give them a heads-up. So all in all, you know, we've done, between those mailings and the, the direct outreach, a lot of outreach. With that said, you know, this project has been going on for the last four years through the design phase. Federal projects are lengthy, they're extremely intensive. Every detail has to be approved by the state and federal highway. So within that time, properties change hands. So for instance, you know, there are owners of properties that we started dealing with that no longer live in Chelsea, since so much time has lapsed. So we've done our best to keep up with the properties that have sold on the corridor, to introduce ourselves to the new owners. It hasn't been perfect, we can't catch all of them, but we've done our, our absolute best. So there's a, outside of this meeting tonight, going to be, as I mentioned, that additional public meeting before we kick off construction. And in addition to that public meeting, we'll be holding smaller neighborhood meetings and doing a lot of door-to-door outreach to coordinate around construction impacts.
Thank you. Council Robertson?
I don't know if you can actually address this question. My, my, my question is the development that has taken place at the end of Broadway and towards Revere for building some units. Why weren't they held accountable to address the sidewalk needs on Clinton Street and Broadway that they probably had an opportunity to apply for a Mass Works grant to be able to do that? I'm wondering why we would be stepping up to make sure that this happens.
So that's a great question. So the thousand five Broadway project, as part of their zoning board of appeals decision, was mandated to replace the sidewalks along the perimeter of the site. So as part of this project, because we're going to be doing the sidewalks after they're finished with construction, we'll be replacing the sidewalks for them, and we'll be asking for a payment in lieu. So they're essentially paying us the value of that sidewalk work, but our contractor's gonna be doing it just so we can sequence everything properly.
Thanks. We'll get to, Councilor Cupro, a question? Speak into the microphone, please.
It's very simple. So, when these people, on the temporary one, when they go and fix, go there, right? And then they, they get compensated, right? When the contractor leaves, right? If there's any work to be done, does the contractor pay for the work that's there without deducting the money they got?
So the contractor's responsible for returning the property to existing conditions. So, let's say they damaged something accidentally, they're responsible for fixing that. And our construction manager and construction administration team's going to be monitoring that to make sure that, that obligation's fulfilled. They can't do any work above and beyond that. So for instance, if somebody wants their driveway replaced as part of the project, but they didn't have their driveway damaged, the contractor unfortunately can't do that since it's a federally funded project.
But they're responsible if they do damage?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, that's, thank you, that was, that's what I wanted to know. No more questions.
I see there are many members of residents here that attended tonight's meeting, and I saw a few raised hands. Well, at this moment, I will allow, if there's any resident who'd like to ask any questions to Alex Train or the city manager, please speak up to the microphone and state your question and your name for the record. Name and address. If you have, yes, go up to the microphone, just state your name and address and your question.
My name is Ann Bates.
Ann Bates.
I, I don't have a question, but the address is six eighty-eight, uh, six eighty-eight Broadway. I have a business there. Christopher Kokoris Insurance Agency. I just have a comment. The letter that you sent out was very scary. And it looked like it was only, it looked like they were taking my whole building. And I think that in the future, I don't know if this is a legal way you have to put it, but it really scared me because it looked like they were taking my whole building. And I couldn't sleep all weekend. I don't know if anybody else had the same problem, but now I'm glad I came here tonight because it cleared up a lot of things and it relaxed me a lot. That's all I wanted to say.
How you doing tonight, Tommy? Good to see you. Good evening, guys, girls, ladies, people. I'm at nine fifty-three Broadway, and I just got a couple of notices for the property being dirtied. My neighbor crashed into the house and knocked both bathrooms off the house almost two years ago. I've been in a hotel for a while now, so I'm trying to like deal with this. I haven't had a contractor there for two or better months because of the work done on the street. And it's really set me back here, so I don't know what to say. More construction down there, just hope that I can get in there to finish my work there. And as far as the property being dirty, there's a dumpster in the driveway, there's a permit in the door. It's like my third notice. And on top of it, this last one that these gentlemen sent, there was a thing there, like he said, to have the property fixed. But underneath, it was another thing about the yard being dirty. And I don't even call. I'm like, why you wanna call and get yourself in trouble? So, I'm like this woman over here, I see eminent domain. I thought you're gonna come down there and take my house from me. That's all I wanted to say.
Yes.
My name is Marco Gomez, I live in nine fifty-seven Broadway. And I just wanna basically agree with the lady that spoke about the letter. The way it was written is frightening. Basically, it's telling you they're gonna take our, our building? I think that...
I'm gonna get a copy of the letter.
I think you guys, you had to, you know, not everybody is in the legal system or anything like that. But we should be a little more simple, just the way you explain it right now, and the way the council was saying. Just like that?
My name is Jamila Tejada. We own the property in seven thirty-eight Broadway.
Can you speak, come closer so we can hear you?
My name is Jamila Tejada. We own the property in seven thirty-eight Broadway, and the, the letter was pretty scary. We actually, my father, his Ricardo Valley, he's the pastor from that church. He called, I believe it was Roy, just for another explanation, because the letter is pretty intimidating, the way that it's ringing. It, it really didn't have that explanation that Alex gave us right now. So I just wanna agree that maybe the next time when you guys do give like warning out to, or a letter, just maybe specify a little bit more what is, that you're doing with the easement, and that would help.
So I believe the letter that was drafted, that came from the city council, was the formal letter that when you do an order of taking, under the law, you have to notify that you are doing it...
It, it helps if you can, thank you. You can hold it in microphone if you want, instead of like Alex did.
You have to notify property owners that you are using your power of eminent domain to take their property, whether it's a friendly taking or not. They had to do so. It doesn't normally just come from the city council. They really wanted your attention to this matter, to appear this evening. It's not a typical way that we do that. But we were, and I believe the city council were, under the impression you all knew what was going on because of the past four years of how we've reached you. Perhaps next time, we will take better care when we send out those notices. We just had to send out a mass amount of notices so that you as property owners could participate tonight. So you as property owners would come here tonight and actually see what the council is doing and what the departments in the city administration was doing. It was not meant to scare you. As an attorney, I'm sorry, I write legalese. And I believe council also is learning about this project and step by step, as you can see from their own answers, how we approached each area of Broadway differently, why some are temporary, why some are permanent. And really, we're mandated under federal law to do this process, to, to take permanent and temporary easements. We usually don't use our eminent domain powers for temporary situations. We do right-of-ways. We ask you to sign something and say, if we go on your property and we damage it, we will fix it. But unfortunately, we had to do this formal way so we can get federal funding to do it. So next time, we will send out clearer letters. I can't tell you that there won't be legalese in them, but they, they will be a lot clearer. So I believe we were contacting property owners as to their appraisals. Mr. Train just stated, first you were told about what was going on, then you were told about, we were asking permission to appraise the property. So we, we, we were under the impression that most of the property owners have been part of this process all along.
We were contacted, and we responded, and something came out, maybe it was...
It was Mr. Cares, Ben, Ben Cares, yeah.
We were responsible, everything. Yeah, and we did respond to that, and the man came out, showed us where it was, and we gave permission. That was the one thing, that was fine, that was perfect. We really received it, paying that they were taking our land.
Well, unfortunately, the formality of the legalese is we have to provide you legal notice. And you were just one of many property owners who unfortunately had to receive that letter.
Just to clarify, I myself, and I know through a conversation with Councilor Cupro, who's someone that he knows, had received a letter originally back in November, I think, that was sent out to our property owners saying, explaining that there were gonna be two types of easements, temporary and permanent, and that there would be some, again, the letters from appraisals. I have here in front of me a copy of the letter, the original letter that was sent out first. And this was about just notifying the city of Chelsea, with Mass Highway, was in the appraisal process to look at the, that the AM appraisal associates been directed to do an appraisal property to the parcel for either, or is it temporary easement or permanent easer, easement? The, and there were no permanent rights that would be taken on, on this one. And then the cit, the letter for the city, which was sent out by this office, with the list provided by the planning and development, community planning and development office, through our list, we sent out that the city council is notifying you, notifying you about a public hearing Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to consider obtaining services for possible eminent domain taken at the location below. The order is to appropriate a total of three hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-five to fund both the takings and related professional services. And this one was addressed to the telephone company next door. But that is a copy of the letter. And then it says that the meeting will be held on Wednesday, February ninth, which is tonight, in council chambers. Now, I understand, it says possible eminent domain taking, and I will fault, I will take the blame for not including in there temporary or permanent easements, which was part of the earlier letter. But the eminent domain was the process, legal process to do it, but it should have been temporary or permanent, which is explained by Alex. I think that would have helped. And also, the three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, I got a lot of calls thinking, you're gonna take my, my land for three hundred and twelve thousand dollars? No, that's actually the total that the city council is funding towards these services. And there, we're talking about small payments of five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. What are the ranges, Alex, around that? Somewhere in, from as low as five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred in totality, based on the amount of space that they're going to temporarily use that. So I understand, again, it was a little bit of a miscommunication between the legal office and what our office had to send out to everybody. And of course, I can imagine that receiving the letter probably put a fright, but this was something that was being repetitive, as Mr. Cupro, I mentioned earlier, we heard from people that received an earlier letter, telling them there may be something temporary an easement coming, and that was all part of the process. But again, I apologize on behalf of my staff for, you know, making you, and, and many of you, for feeling stressed out this last week or so. But it was just, again, public notification process and, and verify. So we hope that, again, I hear that a lot through Alex's presentation, that you're now comfortable, you understand what's going on, that basically, we're redoing the streets, and you'll get a much better sidewalk and edge of your property than what was currently there. Councilor Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to say also, that was a little frightening also, and we apologize as the council president stated, as the chair of the finance. When we saw that, we went in and I talked to the city manager, so, you know, what, what did we talk about, you know, an easement and, and, you know, eminent domain? Because eminent domain is something you actually take in, you know, believe being taken. And we just, I talked to him, and the comments that I made earlier was what I really focused on, that, that, hey, have we had folks to reach out to the residents and make sure that they're notified and engaged, that they can get this information, to make it a little clear? Because it was probably a lot frightening how you felt, you know, when I'll be like, why, why are they taking my property? Because you didn't know, maybe it was a whole collaborative of work that would be going on. But again, as a legal, our council has stated, that we, you know, we have to do it by law, I was told that, but it also got your attention that, you know, to come up here and, you know, it's not like a threat or anything, but we wanted you to hear firsthand what truly would be going on. And as we go on in these other public meetings and stuff, you'll learn more. And again, I was glad to hear that, you know, seventy percent of the folks were like, oh yeah, you can stand on my property. And, and if we really look at some of the properties that we're talking about, it's really property that folks really don't even know it's their property, it's just a joint that close to it. And it's not like it's in your backyard or on your side of your heart, it's directly where the work is gonna be impacted at. So I, you know, we apologize, we all apologize, but it had to come from the city council and that, and, you know, our legal department and stuff. So glad you folks would be here to, to hear, you know, and we hope also that you can share that with your abutting neighbors that may also be under that kind of stress also. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Vega Maldonado? Speak into the, just lower the microphone.
I'm short. I would just suggest that in the future, if we can just briefly describe, like, what is it that we're taking? You know, because I think when I read it here, and it says a small portion of your front yard area, blah, 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 I think, okay, that is, you know, like, it's a little bit easier to understand that where it's descriptive, versus here, it definitely feels like you're taking something, and it, it doesn't state what and stuff, and it worries them. And I think, you know, with, in the times that we're living in, so many things that are happening, with evictions and people being displaced and stuff, I just think, you know, maybe even a face-to-face, but would have been better, of course. Especially when it's only nine people that are gonna, nine families. So I think, you know, maybe in the future, if it's a smaller number that we are aware of, if we can go that extra and just try to go to their door, or, you know, to describe essentially what it is, I would feel much better.
I just wanna say, and, and I recognize the number of people that showed here, but there were also quite a number, a few phone calls that both myself and Alex received over this, and Cheryl also, property, you know, businesses and homeowners, and, and I, Alex was great in... Alex was great in that, A, he gave me these same plans and provided the plans to me, which I then forwarded to those who responded to me via email, so they could see this map and see the map that showed the green, and I pointed out, it looks, it's temporary, these are the street line, you know, these are the areas, and whether or not your property is, you know, getting anything permanent. So I'm sure if it was not for the response that Alex and Cheryl, again, by phone, had made, I think we would have had a lot more people here in our room, because... But again, the point of the matter is, I agree, we understand that the letter, that was not more explicit in describing the process, but we will try to do a better job in the future. And again, apologies for that.
Apologies, we're so sorry.
Counselor DeJesus.
Are there any properties where folks have not responded and we have not heard?
Alex, has there been any properties that have not responded in any which way?
Yeah, there have been a handful of properties that haven't responded, either because they are owned by shell companies like the Slade's Mill Properties, or simply because our attempts didn't yield a response. So in those cases, under state law, we have to assume that they'll wanna be compensated. So we essentially issue the money and put it in a separate account with the treasurer, and then that owner can eventually come and redeem it when they choose to respond.
By shell, they mean, it could be an LLC that has some address out of the city, and, you know, it's just a mailbox, and there's no telephone number, no person, and such, and difficult. And so those are what they mean by maybe shell. A lot of companies, or a lot of properties, rather, are held in trust or in LLC, and then it's not the... And these are typically commercial buildings that are held and such.
We have, yeah. Unfortunately, so like, for instance, there's property up next to Mill Creek that's owned by the successor to the owner of Slade's Mill, that, you know, was around over 100 years ago. So those are out-of-state companies we don't have contact information for, other than that PO bucks. And then for the ones that do exist on Broadway, we've done door-knocking, canvassing. Most of those honestly have been rental properties, so there haven't been owners on site when we've gone there.
Thank you.
One of the things that I was concerned with, that there was so much construction going on around that part of Broadway. So we just think, you know, probably the city, you know, some corporation that just wanna give me the box, build a lot of apartments here.
No.
Like the rest of the work that's been going on throughout parts of the city.
Counselor... I'm sorry, city manager Tom Embrizino.
Yeah, I just wanna say, the whole purpose of this project is to make your neighborhood look better. The goal is to upgrade Broadway and make it a nicer place to live for the people who live and own property there. So at the end of the day...
Welcome there. We've been there for 27 years. And I see nothing but good things, but, you know, that didn't kinda make us stay and know what's going on.
So it is gonna be two years of disruption and inconvenience, but when it's all over, it's gonna be really a very pretty street, with nice street, nice sidewalks, trees, all-new traffic signals. It will really look a lot better. And then we're gonna do it all over again on downtown Broadway, and we'll have to go through the same process. But then, we'll have learned our lesson and send out better notices.
Please step to the microphone, state your name.
Actually, I'm here with my dad, 921 Broadway. And the question is, when you block the driveways, because the way my dad's house is, there's a long driveway, and the garages are in the back. And from looking at that plan, I can see it right here, too. There's green on it, so they're gonna be blocking the driveway. So how long will they be blocking it?
Alex, in the... This happens a lot on projects where there are driveways, and when there's construction, there may be a day or two that they won't have access, I imagine, in crossing, but they try to minimize the time of not being able to use the driveway to access, correct? Can you... I mean, I know Lou's not here, but typically, in past experience, when we've done this sort of work, and there is access to a driveway that may be impeded, what is the... What are the mitigations that's done?
So for driveway, when we're pouring that driveway apron, if it's a wider driveway, we can do half of it in one day, let that be completed, so you can drive over that. And then we do the other half another day. But yours is narrower. So you'll have... Exactly. So there'll be roughly, you know, a day where you won't be able to access that space. It takes around 24 hours for the concrete to set before you can drive over it again.
Okay, but are you gonna give the homeowner notice that they're gonna be blocking their driveway on a certain day?
Absolutely. So we're gonna give everyone at least two weeks of notice if we're going to be blocking their driveway or blocking their entryway before the contractor does it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any residents? Yes. Please, so that they can hear you. It's on record, and the residents at home can hear you.
In the paper that I got today, it says the improvement plan for the Beecham Street Casino. What is that?
That was actually... What it means is, money from that project was a surplus. And so that originally, there was the city council voted to fund the Beecham Casino roadway improvements. That whole amount was not spent, so there was leftover money. And we are transferring that money over from that account into the upper Broadway account. So basically, we have a surplus of the budget, and then now we transfer, but you need... We need to update... We need to order that transfer from the finished project to this one. And it's been something that has been going on the last few years, with a lot of CIPs or capital improvement projects. We fund different projects, there's many times there's money unspent, and we take it and put it forward into other capital improvement projects, such as this.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. That's absolutely correct. So in addition... So the council has to take several votes on this. So one is the vote we've been talking about, which is, they have to vote to take the easements and pay the money. And then... But the second, the other vote you need to take, and I think there are four, is you have to appropriate the money to do that, and it's coming from four different parts. I think there's... I don't have the order in front of me, but I think there are three old projects that we have some surplus money. That's one of them. There are two other old projects, we have a little surplus. We're transferring that money, and the balance, which is about, I forget, 50 or so, we have to take from stabilization, because those three projects, we don't have quite enough. And the... No, it's 112, I think. The balance we're taking from stabilization. That all adds up to the 312 that we need to cover all of these costs of paying all of the abutters.
Any other questions? Seeing now, again, I wanna thank everyone for coming. We apologize once again for any confusion that or misrepresentations in our communications that may have caused a little bit of stress. I wanna thank the city manager and Alex for the presentation and clarifying the project. And at this time, we'll close the meeting, but you can ask a question one-on-one, and we'll answer it. Thank you, everybody. This concludes this meeting.